Good evening. I'm called to order the November first meeting of Glens Falls Planning Board. The first item on our agenda this evening is the review and potential approval of the minutes from the October fourth meeting. Can you start with Mr. Brown? Any comments for me?
No comment.
No comments? Bridgette?
No comment.
Kim?
No comment.
I had none either. Very well done. I've made a motion that we accept the minutes as submitted. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
First item on our agenda this evening is sign review twenty-two dash zero 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 nine. Pursuant to the city sign code one eighty-six, AJ Signs representing the owner of Hudson Headwaters Health Network is seeking a sign board review and approval for additional signage. Is there someone here to represent this application, please? And I understand we have new information that has been submitted. I think it's the same stuff that we presented to you previously, but if you could just state your name to the record and...
Sure. My name is Emma Heck with AJ Sign Company representing Hudson Headwaters. Tonight, I, we have passed out a copy of the revised signage proposal. You will see in your copy a few freestanding signs. There's two freestanding signs. One is going to go at either entrance of this building. This building is one building, but split into two. So one side is the Pace Center and one side is LaRose Center. The Pace Center is about fourteen thousand square feet and then the LaRose Center is about seventeen plus thousand square feet. So the Pace sign will go obviously at that entrance on one side of the building and then the Hudson Headwaters LaRose sign will go at the other end or the other entrance for LaRose. Those are the two freestanding signs. Those are proposed at twelve square feet. Those are a little bit different than the originally submitted. You'll notice the one stayed the same, which is the Hudson Headwaters. That's the red and the brown one. The other is the Pace Center and because of the differentiate, the difference in the branding, we did change up the Pace Center's colors. It's just their marketing is a little bit different, so they wanted to make sure they were two separate signs. And then if you go over to the right side of the proof page, you'll notice we also changed up the logo signs. Originally, when we submitted these, they were going to be internally lit. They've decided just because of power reasons that we're not going to internally light them. They're just going to be flat cut aluminum. Those will be pin mounted to the peak of the building. And if you go to the back of your packet, you'll see the elevation drawings. And the first page shows the south elevation and you can see in that peak, the H H N logo up there. So that's one of them. And then the other at the bottom of that page is the east elevation. That also shows the H H H N logo. That's going to instead be, I'll call it the heart looking logo for the Pace Center. We just could not get updated conceptual elevation drawings from the architect in time.
We're playing on the arch. Yes. Yep, the one that's on the bottom of that page will have this set of heart looking...
Correct, yep. And those are each twenty-five square feet and again, non-lit. And just to note that the freestanding signs I was just talking about, those will be internally lit. And then last but not least, we have four sets of channel letters. This is also a little bit different than the original permit that we, permit application. Originally, we had submitted for two, but there's actually four different sets. And if you flip, sorry to make you keep flipping. If you flip to that first page again, you'll notice there is LaRose Pace Center on the partial south elevation, which is in the middle of that page. So that's going to be the, or the Pace at Hudson Headwaters letter set, which is the bottom of letter set, so two hundred and forty-three inches long. And that does show that it's on the canopy, but because of structural issues and just bounding methods, we proposed to the client or suggested to the client to put that on top of the canopy. It's just going to be a way easier way to mount them, really the only way that we can mount them. For example, you'll see that on the bottom of that page, the east elevation on the left, the LaRose Family Health. So that letter set is going to be the Glenns Falls Family Health letter set that's shown on your proof. And if you flip that page again to the other elevations, you're going to see basically the same thing, but at the north elevation and then the west elevation.
So those are going to wind up being on top of the porch or instead of on the facade?
Exactly, yep. And those are going to be internally lit channel letters and their sole purpose are just for identification, for patients to know that that's where they pull up. Do I have any questions on the board?
Okay. Cover that. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this application? No? Anybody out there in TV way? Anybody out there looking? No? So I will start with our architectural consultant, Mr. Brown.
I was just interested in the hours of elimination of the signs.
The client would like to keep them lit twenty-four seven, just because it is a hospital, it's a medical facility. These letter sets, they're shown as brown, so they're not going to be extremely bright by any means. The translucent brown actually helps to kind of dim them a little bit. They will have a nice white outline because the vinyl's inset, but I think what would be proposed is that they're, they're on, not twenty-four seven, but when it is dark, they're elevated.
Okay. So they would, they would be on all evening or all night long?
Correct.
Those are the ones that are on the building? The two freestanding signs, are those on a timer?
They can be on a timer if that's something that the board would like to suggest, you know, if you would like them off from one AM to, or whatever that might be.
The facility's not open twenty-four seven, correct?
I don't believe so.
I don't, I don't believe it is, and I think we went over that when they were here. So I, I think that what I would say is that, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we had talked to them about, they have some, they have some exterior canopy lighting and some lights that were there, so what I think I would recommend is that it's tied into whatever the timer clock is for those lights.
Sure.
So that the site lighting goes off at the same time the sign lighting would go off.
Okay.
I think it was the parking lot lighting and there was canopy lighting because there was lighting on the backside of the building that faces the residential zone.
Okay.
And that, I know, we talked to them about putting that on a timer so that it does shut those off at night.
Sure.
So I think I would, I think to answer your question, Dan, I think...
I'm a little confused though. I thought the freestanding signs were lit.
Yep.
But the ones, the sixty by sixties, such a sign would illuminate it, it says no.
Those are the ones that are up at the peak of the building?
No, no.
Yep, those are not.
Those are not?
Just the channel.
Just the freestanding signs.
The freestanding and then the channel letters.
And the channel letters that are over the top of the porch. So if, if those can be tied into the site lighting?
Sure.
I think it would be beneficial to everybody and that covers us with the previous resolution that we made before.
Okay.
I'm all good, so it's been...
Mr. Bell?
We absolutely want people to be able to find it and find the right spots with the sign footprint, again, as long as they're on the timer, so they're all connected, they're engaged, you know, that's fine, I think.
Bridgette?
Is there any exterior lighting that would be on just for like, just safety type things or, you know, like leaning, you know, facing the parking lot area, let's say?
I believe that there is some lighting that go, there's some light blockers that kind of line the sidewalk and I believe those, we allow them to leave those, so those were on, but we have to shut everything else off.
Yeah, okay, just so there's some kind of...
There, yeah, there's dark sky compliance fixtures that just shine down on the ground.
Okay.
There is the standard light blockers, but I think everything else, that's, that's on there. Yes, yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not a totally dark site. It is, there is some lighting and I think there was, I think there was maybe one part of the pole lights that were left on as well. And yeah, and both Western and LaRose have street lights as well. Okay. I didn't have any other questions as well. I mean, I think that the, you know, going through and looking at it, you know, the, all the parts of the sign code here are pretty well met. I think we're a little bit over on square footage according to the size, but again, that's why you're here and I don't think that any of us, I would understand it if this were a single site that only had one frontage, but we're talking about a fairly large site that has frontage on two streets. So I can understand why we're over on size and honestly, I think if you take that part of the sign code and you apply it and look at it from a frontage standpoint, I think you should get double the size just because you have two fronts, so I'm comfortable with that as proposed.
The other part of the regulations say no signs shall be erected or installed on the roof or surface of any building. No signs shall project above the roof line of the building which is attached.
And I think here, this is on the porch. It's not actually physically above the roof line of the building. I think that it, while it does go above the roof of the porch, I think that that's a reasonable act because the porch is not taller than the building. And everybody else kind of agree with that? I've seen, I've seen exactly how these mounted before and, and they're not, you know, we're talking about, we're talking about a letter that's literally eleven inches tall. You know, I mean, that, that, that would be sticking above the top of the porch or, I mean, from LaRose Street, from Western Avenue, you'll just be able to see that. Obviously, when you get closer to them, they're going to be more prevalent and if they are lit, I think that will be what they're, the effect that they're trying to achieve, I think that will... Is there any... So I would, I would make a motion that the Glens Falls Planning Board acting as a Board of Sign Review hereby grant sign approval for the project identified as the applicant. AJ Signs representing the owners of Hudson Headwaters Health Network for the sign application that was made and presented, excuse me, at the meeting of one November twenty-twenty-two with no conditions for...
No conditions?
I'm sorry, the only, I'm sorry, the only, with the only condition being that the lighting for the signs be tied to the site lighting that was part of our original approval. So that you shut off, when those lights shut off. Can I get a second? A second? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Dan, I remembered to get to you this night. So the next item on our agenda is an encroachment permit pursuant to the city Glens Falls encroachment permit policy for Melinda Combs, owner of tax map number three zero nine point three six dash three dash nine, commonly known as Mohegan, sixty Mohegan Street, seeking approval from the city Glens Falls Common Council for an encroachment permit or a curb cut to add an additional driveway to her property. Pursuant to this policy, the application requires a planning board review and the issuance of an advisory opinion to the common council for review. Is there anyone here representing that application? Good evening. For the record, can you state your names?
Melinda Combs.
John Maker.
And what can you tell us about your application? We do have your, the information that you have provided to us, but would you like to add to that?
I'm going to have him talk because he knows more of the information and the measurements.
Sure, absolutely.
So basically, we need another driveway on the other side because, so we have a slate roof, so the snow comes out fast. And behind that, actually, they put like a metal roof on it, but as far as like the neighbors, like they, they actually don't park there in the winter. They only have like one car, plus they kind of leave them way out so the snowplow guy don't plow them in. You know, they're, I don't know, they're kind of a little childish about that, you know what I mean? I mean, they got to plow the road, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Yeah, so basically, that's it. And it's kind of a pain in the ass to park like this when you have, when you can't get out, you have to have the other person get out and that, you know, or you have to try to move the vehicle.
Right.
You know, so it's, it's kind of, it's just kind of more, it's just easier, you know?
Tackling on the other side. Is this, is this a single family or is this multi?
Single family, yep. So I've been parking on the other side, just, you know, going over the curb, which is, you know, kind of a pain in the ass, but like if we don't get approved, that'll be what I continue to do, so it is what it is.
Okay. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak on this application? Seeing none. I will start with our consultant, our architectural consultant, Mr. Brown.
I'm always looking for options and so looking at the neighbor's house.
Yep.
Where they park, as you say, one in front of the other, whether or not that was viable for your solution.
Well, it's, it's kind of not really because like I say, in the winter, they don't park there. They only park one car there.
Yeah.
So, so we don't have that option, like we have no other place to park. And I mean, we're not going to park our, our brand new vehicle under the, you know, where the...
My new glass top.
Where the snow is going to come off the roof, you know? Like on the other side, it's a different, the roof is kind of different.
Yeah.
So it, so it, so it won't fall off the same. Plus, you can keep the vehicle up a little and it won't, like neither vehicle will be under the roof. And as far as the property line, like the neighbor, we already talked to them, they're like, oh yeah, bring it all the way over, but that's because they want to park double there.
Probably.
So we're like, yeah, no, we're not, we're not putting a driveway for you guys, you know?
So you're looking basically at, at fourteen feet, which goes from the edge of where that concrete sidewalk is now?
Yeah, yeah, it might even actually just be twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah, because I, I kind of rechecked it today. It's like eighteen all the way to their driveway.
Got it.
But like, like even at twelve, I have a couple feet because I, when I back it in, I actually keep it right, right along the sidewalk every time.
Right.
So it's like, like at twelve is plenty.
Okay.
And then I, I think we could almost get away with like one section of curb and then just the two have to be just cut and then no big deal.
My only other comment was that it should be concrete, the apron and course of city sidewalk.
Yep, which the sidewalk shouldn't even have to be, should be okay.
You won't, you won't wind up having to do anything to...
Yeah, we should be fine there. Just do the apron from the sidewalk out, do the pavement from the sidewalk in.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it potentially could get damaged with equipment, but if it does, then we'll fix it up. Yep.
So Andrew?
Yeah, has there been like a recent survey of the properties to make sure that there's no encroachment on somebody else's property here? That's my first question.
I can't answer that. There wasn't a survey that was, that was provided to us. Do you know where the actual property corner is?
So we asked the neighbor, which has been there for fifty years, the old lady, and she said it's right there along their driveway. So they actually took down the little thing that was encroached on our side. They had like a, you know, like a temporary garage type thing. Yeah, which she was like, oh yeah, my son, my son put that up and she was like all mad at him or whatever. But they took it down and, you know?
Yeah. I, I would, I would think that that's...
I mean, it shouldn't be too hard ultimately.
Where their driveway is.
So there's a, so there's a fence on the other side of our driveway, like eighteen inches. You got like eighteen inches and then there's a fence. So I mean, if it says it's a fifty-eight, fifty foot, you know, be a lot, then you measure from two foot past the fence and fifty foot and that's pretty much where it is. I mean, it's pretty cutting dry, like as far as, you know, it's not like going at a funny shape or you, you know, it's a rectangle, you know?
Square a lot, the Mohegan Street.
Yeah.
Well, I just, you know, hate to be involved in a situation in the future that if, you know, we're, it's twelve, fourteen feet wide, whatever the case is, and we're honoring these people to do a curb cut on the driveway, that could be, you know, encroaching on somebody else's property. That puts us in a little bit of, you know, wondering. I think it's a wild project. I just think that, I think it should be more delineated. That's, that's my, that's my...
Would it, would it be? I, I think it might be to your advantage to at least get a surveyor out there to...
Oh, I know a surveyor.
To locate the property corners.
Just do the one, the one line that is parallel to...
And all they, all they would have to do is just locate the pin. And once you, once you locate the pin, then...
Yeah, we may even be able to find it. We may be able to measure and find it.
Right.
Yeah, and that's a good possibility as well, just to try to identify, maybe they're around your property.
Yeah.
Maybe you've got more than you realize.
Well, it's, it's right up, it's right up. It's like, they might have sixteen inches off their driveway, maybe.
Okay. But, but still, it's just a security, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, it's better, better to know. Yep.
And then as far as, you know, as far as the dimensions, I think that's very suitable. You can have one vehicle in this, in this area.
Yep.
We only have two vehicles.
Yeah.
And I just can't pull mine ahead because mine's a full, I have a Jeep and it's a full glass rooftop, so I'm like, I don't want to pull ahead.
No, I understand, totally, that's good. Other than that, I just think just validating that one property line.
Yeah, the property line was of my concern too. I don't have any idea where it is, if it's on the, um, which side of the drive, which side of the driveway is, that's all. What, what if you straighten that out and you could... No questions?
I have a problem with my house, same thing. So as long as you guys can find that light, it makes light, it's scary when you go to sleep at night and wonder in the morning, is it going to come off?
Right. But you hear it when it comes on.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's a trigger.
Even when trucks go by, it's like...
It shakes the whole house.
As long as, yeah, it's a...
It's a hum, but they don't...
I don't see an issue with a lot.
And that, that was really the only question that I had. So I think we're all in agreement that you, you know, locate that property corner and just make sure that from the sidewalk to the street, it's, it's concrete.
Yep.
And those are the only two real conditions I think you would put on it. You see here?
No, are you suggesting that you're going to have an advisory opinion if it's more aligned where the lot line is?
I think that the advisory opinion, we can put that in as part of our advisory opinions, well, you know, as a condition that the, that the corner pin be located prior to the installation of the drive.
Once you do your advisory opinion, it goes to the common council agenda, so I guess the question is, who's going to follow up to make sure the common council has seen it? Is it possible that you can issue it upon, there's some of the information that both of the folks are writing?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking.
But I think there's actually probably about that, so the, I don't know, it's that kind of...
Yeah.
And then did you say you're going to make it smaller than fourteen?
Yeah, we'll probably make it twelve, yeah.
Then that'll give you that wiggle room too, if it turns out that there's that twelve to fifteen inches on.
Right, yeah, because it's eighteen to there, so I'm sure six feet is plenty.
Yeah.
Twelve, twenty-three, you, subject to...
Confirmation of the...
Property, and step back from the line and, um...
Jeremy, can we just, have you verified that, that you can get that information back before construction starts?
I think that that's what Kathleen says, that she, that they would get that at the building codes department.
Okay.
How do you, can you do your next, after you've just clarified?
So technically, the way this works, we made the advisory opinion to the common council. At the next common council meeting, they'll, they'll either approve or deny it. Typically, if we made a positive recommendation, they can, we go with our recommendation. So just so you know, it's not, you know, if we say, if we say make the, make the advisory opinion tonight, you have to, you do have to wait until the next common council meeting before it starts up.
Right.
Again, I could start that, you know, search and out the corner marker sooner rather than later.
And when is the next common council...
You'll remember a...
We should, I don't know if we got that because...
No, just they are, they are, I don't know, I think it'll get on that, I think that has some more time.
Yeah, so we'll see if that's...
So you'll probably be on the agenda...
Probably soon, I'm in the white spare room.
So it'd be about eight, twenty-two?
Yeah, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Well, number twenty-nine?
They can get that information, I'll be sending, I'll make sure they can ask if it's delivered, it's on that.
Okay. All good? So then I'm going to make a, a motion that the Glens Falls Planning Board hereby submits the following advisory opinion to the common council, that the council should look with favor on the application of Melinda Combs, owner of tax map number three zero nine point three six dash three dash nine, commonly known as sixty Mohegan Street, for a curb cut for a driveway at her residence. The opinion is advanced with the condition that the, with three conditions, that the corner of the lot be located, that the property corner be located, and that the driveway be on the applicant's property. The total width of the driveway will be twelve feet by thirty-eight feet in total length and that the area between the sidewalk and the road be concrete in accordance with the city. I think that was it. Was there anything else? No? Can I get a second? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? So your next, your next course will be with the common council and that will be on the twenty-second and at that point, they'll, they'll make the final determination.
Okay. So we have to go to that meeting?
You do not have to go to that meeting. You'll be advised after the meeting what the outcome of it was?
Yep.
You, you...
When we find out the information about the property line, where do we bring that?
Right to the, right to the building codes department down on Dix Avenue.
Okay. Very good.
Great. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
One more item. Kathleen does have one more item that she needs to discuss with us this evening that is not on our agenda.
I'm sorry, it just came up today, so...
It's something that is for a future, a future item, so...
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, what we have here before us is a building permit for a shed and I believe it's a twelve by sixteen shed. It's in the LI zone of the community, which is the light industrial. And unlike most of the residential things, they will say with an accessory dwelling, they'll give you specific setbacks and they vary by zone, like for example, most of them will read if it's a hundred square foot or larger permit or shed, it needs to be ten feet in from the rear inside setbacks. If it's under a hundred, it's maybe five feet or, or something to that effect. In the LI, for some reason, they don't specify that, but they do say that it needs to come to you guys for a site plan review. It's a shed, it's a pre-built shed and our building codes have to approve the construction and everything and it basically, because it is pre-built, they just look at the manufacturer instructions and whatever other information is provided by the manufacturer. So what I'm kind of asking you guys to consider, there is something in the code with, under the site plan provisions, that does allow you to do something called a less intensive review. And in that less intensive review, and I could work directly with Ethan on this, just look at the number of things that you require for a full blown site plan and just, you have the power as a board to waiver them, but as a board, you have to vote collectively to decide to do a less intensive review. And I can even send you, so you'll know what's going on, because this just came up today. I can even send you that little section of code, so you'll know what's going on with the less intensive review and then decide...
I think we've, we've done these, we've done these less intensive reviews... I think we've, we've done these, we've done these less intensive reviews for something like this before, and I certainly think that that, to, to keep ourselves in line with what we've done in the past, I think it's something that, because in the light industrial zone, that is something that, you know, all users require a site plan review, period. So I think that we have to, you know, have that at least come, I don't think that we need a full-blown survey, I don't think we need all the, you know, all the.
Well, they may need to be going for a variance.
So if they are going for a variance for something else, they will be provided a survey, and at that point, they can certainly provide us with whatever information is necessary for that. But, um, does anybody else have anything, did they feel strongly one way or the other about it?
Is this for residential as well?
It's a residence, yeah, it's a residence. I'm not sure now, I think it's just a single family residence.
Oh, it's a residence, it's in an LI zone?
Exactly, yes. And, and weirdly, the setbacks there, because they didn't assign them specifically to, uh, uh, accessory dwellings, is the rear is the height of the building and the sides are twice the height, and this is like a two and a half story building, so I don't know, that's why they may need to go for a ZB. And this is not just a clarified sketch review. This is, you, you will be given an approval, it's just a less intensive with the wavering of some of the fines.
So.
That's all I got.
I think I would, yeah, I think I would be amenable to that, and I think that the board, the rest of the board can be amenable to that as well. Do we have anything else?
Any more to go there?
What's that? So I, I would make a motion that we, for this upcoming item, we do, uh, we do allow for a less intensive use. Um, and I would, so we do that, can I have a second? All in favor? Oh, oh, any opposed? She carries, there you go. Um, the one, one item that I do, that I would like to, two items, quick, that I'd like to put forth. Mr. Kearney has submitted his formal resignation to the mayor. I started on this board in nineteen ninety-nine. Peter was a member of this board when I started, uh, so that tells you the role of the board. Um, but I, I will say that in the, in the time that I've been here, um, Mr. Bruno was the other member of this board when I started. And I will say that I do not believe that there is anyone that has been on this board, including myself or Mr. Bruno, who put in more effort and time into review of projects, and probably nobody that knows the planning zoning code more thoroughly than Mr. Kearney. Um, I do thank him for the amount of time that he has put forth to the city, um, as a volunteer, uh, member of this board, as we all are, knowing that, you know, twenty-plus years of his life have been dedicated to doing this service, and there weren't many meetings that Peter wasn't here for. So, um, as a board, I do thank Peter for his service. The only other item that I have, and we can do this outside of, but we typically do a, uh, get together on Christmas time as, as a, as a group, uh, we typically do it after the December meeting. I've spoken with our, about, we, for the last several years, we've just gone across the street, we've been there, we're, after the, after the meeting, um, you know, wives and spouses and husbands, and everything else is also included in that, so. I think our meeting is December sixth, is that how you do it? I think I looked at, I think it's December sixth, it's our next meeting, so. So we would do that after our December sixth meeting, if everybody is serving morning. Yes. I will kind of send out a little internet chat message or something here, just to make sure that everybody's on board. Did everybody get my email that I sent out? Okay. Yes?
I was, I've got some mistake, well, I just.
Can you, can you come, can you come here so that, we are, we are broadcasting lives?
Now I can hear you. I thought that was on the agenda, was the proposed farmer's market.
No, it was last month.
I know, and I, and I was here last month too, and was told there would be no public comment, but that next month there would be.
The next, when they made their next submission. We, we have, we haven't got, we haven't received a formal application from them yet. They came to us for a sketch review last month, and they.
By they, who are you referring to?
Uh, the, the city, the economic quality coordinator, the folks from, uh, the design team came and made a sketch plan review to us, uh, but they have not made a formal application yet.
All right, do you have any idea, maybe timing wise?
I do not know when they will make the formal application. Um, as soon as they do, it will be noticed, it will be publicly noticed.
Okay.
There'll be at least a, I think it's thirty day notice, fifteen day notice, fifty day notice.
But it will be at the planning board, that would be discussed here, at this, yeah, this venue at this time.
Just not this month?
Well, as soon as I make a trip, I think I'll go eat in a restaurant.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Uh, if anybody has anything else? Otherwise, I would make a motion to adjourn the meeting for this evening.
Second.
All in favor? Have a good night.